I love getting to use that. Welcome, everyone. No, I like that. Tuesday, September 10th, Placerville City Council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to ceremonial matters. 3.1 is a proclamation declaring September 11th, 2024, as Patriots' Day, whereas the city of Placerville will always remember and honor the nearly 3,000 innocent lives lost on September 11th, 2001, as our great nation experienced the worst terrorist attack in the history of the United States, and whereas September 11th will forever serve as a reminder of the United States of America's tremendous strength and resilience in the face of devastating loss, and whereas we owe a debt of gratitude to our military, law enforcement, firefighters, first responders, volunteers, and emergency services for the selfless courage they demonstrated in the face of terror while defending our great freedoms, and whereas, as Americans, we must all come together and work to unify our community in order to defend our great freedoms, ensuring that such horrific acts are never again repeated and that our nation remains the land of the free, and whereas, as Americans, it is our duty to pay tribute to the victims, families, and heroes of the September 11th attacks, ensuring their memory lives on, and whereas, by joint resolution, Public Law 107-89 approved December 18th, 2001, the Congress of the United States of America designated September 11th each year as Patriots' Day, and by Public Law 111-13 approved April 21st, 2009, the Congress of the United States of America has requested the observance of September 11th as an annual recognized national day of service and remembrance. Now therefore, I, Jackie No, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024, as Patriot Day, a day of service and remembrance in the city of Placerville. All right. Do we have any... nobody to receive this? Okay. Okay. I will.
We have two, we have a couple of first responders. Give it to me.
Somebody, somebody take this man's picture. The question is, would he not do it if he wasn't getting the picture?
12.2.
That takes us to 3.2, a proclamation declaring September 2024 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer death in men, and whereas, 1 in 8 men have a lifetime probability of developing prostate cancer. 1 in 8 women also have a lifetime probability of developing breast cancer, and whereas, the American Cancer Society estimates that there will be 299,010 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2024, resulting in an estimated 35,250 deaths, and whereas, it is estimated California is expected to have 193,880 new cancer cases in 2024, which is about 1,000 more than projected for 2023, and whereas, the incidence of prostate cancer is more than 70% higher in black men than white men for reasons that remain unclear. Whereas, risk factors for prostate cancer are increasing age, African ancestry, a family history of the disease, and certain inherited genetic conditions, and whereas, the 5-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 32% when it spreads to other parts of the body, and whereas, early-stage prostate cancer usually causes no symptoms, late-stage prostate cancer commonly spreads to the bones and causes pain in several areas of the body, and whereas, the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider and make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer, and whereas, the city of Placerville joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Jackie No, mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby proclaim month of September 2024 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Placerville. All right, you guys, you need to get things checked out. Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Thanks.
I just wanted to say that Richard Montgomery, who, he would have accepted this proclamation today, I don't see him in the audience, but he is an advocate for spreading awareness for this prostate cancer awareness. As you know, he's been here several times, but I'm sure...
Yes.
He would have been here if he could.
Okay. Yes. Very important things that need to be taken care of. All right. We had no closed session, so we have no closed session report. We'll move to adoption of the agenda. I'm going to ask the council if we can move 12.2 to right after 12.5. I understand the people are caught in some traffic, and that way we can give them the best chance of participating, if it pleases the council.
I'll move the agenda with moving 12.2 past 12.5.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, passes unanimously. We will move to item 6, announcements and presentations to the public. We'll start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I have none tonight.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Hi.
I have none.
Councilmember Yarborough?
I have none.
Councilmember Saragosa?
A couple of things. I did have just several meetings with community members throughout the city, so I always appreciate those conversations, just variety of different issues, be it water or homelessness, different things, so I always appreciate the outreach and people looking for more clarity on issues within the city. And then on Friday, participating in regional conference, Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, they do sort of the state of the Latino vote, I think, in California. Anyways, I'm on a panel with, I think, six different city council members in the Sacramento region. I think it's basically the state hog region, so happy to participate in that, and should be fun, so, thank you.
Great, great, thank you. Also, we had our employee party last Thursday, and just want to extend our thank you to all our employees who work really hard for all the members of our city, and we really appreciate them. Thank you. A lot of pulled pork, yes, yes. All right. We'll move to consent calendar. Do any of the council members wish to pull an item? No? We will open consent calendar for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that was within, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade a individual's personal privacy. Do we have any public comment? Yeah, we can, we can't really hear you.
On August 30th, I came home to pressurized sewer coming up into my house, and apparently it's been happening, it happened the whole day while I was at work. It happened once before last year on Mother's Day. City came out, cleared the line. I caught up to it, so I kept up with it, didn't need a cleanup. This time I definitely needed a cleanup. They came out, they did their due diligence, they got cleaning people out there, cleaned everything up. On Saturday, the 31st, they were out there clearing the lines more and checking more of them. They gave me, I got to take a picture of the map of the sewer lines, and the guy that was out there, I guess he was the manager at that point, whatever, foreman, he said the green lines are our lines, and that's what we're responsible for. So they fixed that, got out there and they cleaned. Tuesday, they were out there, they called me, they're trying to lay out how they're going to fix the sewer lines properly, and then Wednesday, when they came out, they realized what a job it was going to be, I'm assuming, and then the bill from the cleaning people, because they got to pull the drywall and all the flooring out of my house on the downstairs, it's unlivable right now. I got a phone call stating that the sewer line's now my problem, and I own it. Every ordinance I could find, it said, I own the line from my house to where it ties into a main line. I have no documentation when I moved in saying I owed this sewer line. I have no agreement with the neighbors that are tied into it 20 feet above me, that we have sewer maintenance program or anything like that, so now I'm stuck with about $100,000 bill, and I got issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and if you need my name, my name's Brian Wadsworth. I live at 564 Cribs Road, and yeah, at this point, my house is unsellable, and I'm trying to retire.
Can you leave maybe your phone number with our city clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor No and members of the council. I wanted to announce to everybody that the League of Women Voters of El Dorado County will be holding a candidate forum for the Placerville City Council candidates. There are three candidates running for two seats, and it will be held on Wednesday, October 2nd, here at Town Hall, and we appreciate the city allowing us to use Town Hall. It's at 549 Main Street at 7:00 PM, and we encourage people to come and bring their questions and get to know the candidates, and the forum will be filmed and posted online at the League of Women Voters El Dorado County YouTube channel. So maybe it takes a day or two, but it will be there for people to see afterward. I have some little flyers I will put up in the, down in the back for people to take. Thank you. I hope everybody can come, it's very important.
Great. Thank you for that announcement, Kathy. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Are there any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Item 9, items pulled from the consent calendar, we have none. 10 ordinances, we have none. 11 public hearings, we have none. Brings us to our discussion and action items. 12.1, consider approving installation of an in-ground Christmas tree stand located to the east of the bell tower. Mr. Stone?
Good evening, Mayor No and council. The item before you seeks approval of the installation of an in-ground Christmas tree stand located just east of the bell tower. In 2023, city staff installed a temporary stand in the same location that's being proposed tonight. This project would be done in-house by public works staff. Prior to excavation, we'll utilize our ground penetrating radar to best position the stand and avoid any conflicts with existing underground utilities or cisterns that were discovered during the Main Street water project a few years back. City staff will excavate the area and utilize the pipe that was used last year in the stand, in-ground, and then also encase it in concrete. On top of that, we'll add a manhole cover and frame to allow easy access every year. I'm estimating the cost of this project to be just under $1,500 in labor and $200 in material for concrete. Last year's project costs were similar for the amount of labor that we used to make the welded pipe stand, and last, and we had to disassemble that entire stand last year when we removed it after Christmas, and so the main benefit of installing this in-ground is it's going to eliminate the ongoing costs every year for constructing a new stand, and all left to do is pull the manhole lid and drop the tree in. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. You have questions from the council?
Drainage.
Say again?
Drainage. That's obviously going to fill up with water during...
We're going to fill it up with water so that it can water the tree.
So, so is it just going to, are you guys going to have something that, how are you going to drain it out afterwards? Are you going to throw a sub pump in it, or?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Just like throughout the year, is it going to fill up with water and stay with water and cause rust and all that good stuff?
So there's actually several other manholes that aren't connected to anything within the city that are about the same depth?
Okay.
We don't have any issues with those.
Cool.
We actually discovered one of those when there was a failed storm drain over on B Street.
All righty.
Great. Questions?
I have a question. So when, when we put the tree in there, we were talking about this on Monday, yesterday, when we were talking about the agenda, see, you put the tree, this is actually an interest, when we want to stabilize a tree, because before we had it all like big chains and come-alongs, which was cool looking, but, but I would think you would just wedge it in there?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we did with the one last year.
Actually, I think Cleve told me that, so I don't want to make it sound like I thought of that, but, yes. All right, just wedge, just for the public, so if anybody's watching, not, well, these people too, they are part of the public, but out there, yeah, okay, so he's like...
So a quick rundown of the process, is the gringol come in, pick the tree up?
Yes.
Stationed over there, and I've got a bunch of like 2x4s, 4x4s, 6x6s that are pre-cut?
Right.
But they still need to get cut to an angle, then I take a chainsaw and then just cut them so that they've got a nice angle on them?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever, because all the trees are going to be different?
Right.
And then kind of balance it out on both sides, and then start beating it in there with a hammer?
Nice. Do we think that...
And those, those chains last year were actually only attached to the stand, they weren't attached...
That's true, they weren't, were they?
This is a system that's really similar to a lot of other places like Jackson, Sutter Creek, Georgetown, they all just drop them in that pipe in the ground right there.
And we're like, yeah.
There's been some discussion too about maybe having the blacksmith shop out at Goldbug kind of fashion, a little decorative stand around the bottom?
Ooh.
Prohibit access down into the...
Nice.
...of the stand.
We had some ideas, I had some brilliant ideas about, rather than doing the K rails, having like really big Christmas, concrete Christmas presents, that would stop cars from running into it, you know, just a thought. It's okay, we can go now. Just a thought. I think it's a brilliant idea.
Do we have any other questions?
I think it's brilliant.
Okay, we will open this for public comment.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to mention that there was a comment received today from Ruth Michelson by email. I've printed copies of that message on the back table, and it's also posted to the city's website for this meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, it was asking about costs, which Nick has covered in his staff report.
And as we know, now it's much less than closing Main Street.
Well, also, it's, you know, an equal cost to what it cost last year, so it's not, it was going to cost us that way either way.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not overtime either?
No, and it's not a lot of other things.
No, it's not, it's just regular time, and if those guys weren't installing a Christmas tree stand, they'd be out flushing sewers or trimming trees or...
Yeah.
Doing regular maintenance stuff.
Public works. They would be doing that.
Good plan. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, seeing no one else, we will bring it back to council for a motion and...
I will make, this is great, I love the idea of dropping it into the ground, and happy to move this item.
I'll second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to 12.3, consider approving an always stop at the intersection of Mallard Lane and Macintosh Drive/Pintail Lane. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No and council members. Do we have the presentation for this? Thank you. All right. The item before you this evening proposes the installation of two new stop signs at the intersection of Mallard Lane and Macintosh Drive/Pintail Lane. In accordance with City Code Section 9-3-7, the location of new stop signs must be approved by the city council at the recommendation of the city engineer. The Mallard Apartments project is an affordable housing development located within the rigid Orchard Hill planned development, and therefore is subject to the conditions of approval of the planned development. One of the conditions of approval requires the developer to have a traffic study performed to review and propose traffic calming devices on Mallard Lane that would be appropriate for a collector roadway. The devices should be specifically focused on assisting with pedestrian crossings of Mallard Lane at Lemon Place and Macintosh Drive. The development project is expected to increase the amount of pedestrian traffic crossing Mallard Lane, especially because two school districts have a bus stop located on the opposite side of Mallard Lane from the development project. Through the improvement plan process, the development team worked closely with the engineering department to meet this condition. The two potential crossing locations were reviewed in depth, and ultimately, based on a review of existing conditions and other engineering considerations, it was determined that the study would only focus on providing a safe crossing at Macintosh Drive. Staff does not recommend installing a crosswalk at Lemon Place and Drake Court. A traffic engineering study was prepared by Prism Engineering on behalf of the developer for the Mallard Apartments project. Next slide, please. As shown in this image, the existing intersection currently has stop signs on the side streets, so both Macintosh Drive on the left side and Pintail Lane on the right side. There is an uncontrolled crossing of Mallard Lane with a high-visibility crosswalk, and on Mallard Lane, as you have all probably seen, there is a dashed median that's about four feet wide, which has two double yellow stripes that are dashed, which is not a typical design standard. Another important item to note is that the northbound downhill grade on Mallard Lane is currently 13% as you're traveling downhill approaching Drake Court, and then levels out to about 6% when you reach Macintosh Drive. The speed limit on Mallard Lane is currently 30 miles per hour. The traffic study by Prism Engineering collected existing speed and traffic volume data and provided a comprehensive engineering review of the existing conditions. The traffic study identified two primary areas of concern. Next slide, please. So the first, observed vehicle speeds on northbound Mallard Lane are significantly higher than the posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour. In the section of Mallard Lane from Drake Court to Macintosh Drive, the observed 85th percentile speed was 43 miles per hour. Although this is significantly higher than the posted speed limit, the 30 mile per hour speed limit is appropriate for the residential collector street with both horizontal and vertical curvature constraints, but the 13% downhill grade seems to make it challenging for vehicles to drive the appropriate speed. Next slide, please. Secondly, it was determined that there was insufficient stopping sight distance at the Mallard Lane/Macintosh Drive intersection. For a vehicle traveling northbound on Mallard Lane at 43 miles per hour, typical design standards would require a minimum of 336 feet of stopping sight distance. As this exhibit shows, you can see that the horizontal curve limits the sight distance for vehicles turning left onto Mallard Lane from Pintail Lane. The study also found that a pedestrian in the crosswalk can only be seen a distance of 283 feet away, which also falls short of the stopping sight distance. Next slide, please. Typically, the traffic engineering community frowns upon the use of adding new stop signs as a form of traffic calming. However, in this case, there are more serious design and safety considerations that make the stop signs the best choice. As such, staff is recommending the approval of installation of two new stop signs on Mallard Lane, creating an always stop at this intersection. As you can see on this exhibit, if approved, the development project would install two new stop signs, new crosswalk markings, three new ADA complaint curb ramps on the intersection corners, and advanced warning signs on the Mallard Lane approaches. The development project will also be replacing the existing street lighting on the southwest corner of the intersection, because right now, the existing street lighting is insufficient, so it would be more of a Cobra Head-style light that can adequately light the intersection. The traffic study also made additional recommendations for striping modifications on Mallard Lane, mainly to correct the non-standard median striping, but given the poor condition of the pavement on Mallard Lane, staff is recommending that we defer the striping improvements until the pavement rehabilitation work is completed. The Mallard Lane Maintenance Project, which is CIP number 42325, is currently planned for construction in fiscal year 2526, and staff recommends doing the striping improvements with that project. And lastly, if this item is approved, staff will be working to determine the best timing to install the new improvements, as well as how to best implement this new stop signs. This is a pretty significant change, and so we're going to want to roll out the improvements safely. I've talked to Mr. Stone about potential changeable message signs that may be used if we do that, so we can have advanced warning signs alerting drivers to the new traffic control conditions. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? No questions. No questions. Okay, we will open this for public comment.
With the increased number of people who are going to be living there, I think that this is badly needed, especially when you're going downhill, it is difficult to keep your car down to 30 miles an hour, especially on 13% grade, it's pretty steep. So if you know you have to hit a stop sign, that will really help people to talm it down, and if there's a stop sign so that you have to stop for pedestrians, they're going to be a lot safer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will bring this back to the council. I think this is good timing at National Night Out. The Orchard Hill community expressed concerns over the speeds on that road and sightlines as they're pulling out. Plus, when we put in the new development, the park is going to be across the street for the children to cross, so this all seems like really good timing for this project.
So just one quick question, were stoplights considered?
Yes, there was a complete traffic control analysis, so they looked at traffic signal and also roundabout. A traffic signal was not warranted due to the traffic volumes, there wasn't a high enough traffic volume for the traffic signals, and a roundabout was not warranted, there was more concerns with the steep downhill grade, but both were still looked at.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 12.4, consider approving a contract with ATEEM Electrical Engineering in the amount of $25,825 for the water reclamation facility load bank PLC replacement project. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you again, Mayor No and city council members. The item before you will take the necessary steps to replace the water reclamation facility's load bank PLC, which is a programmable logic controller. This project was not included in the 2425 budget, but the project need was identified over the summer following a series of power outages. During the 2009 plant upgrade, a Caterpillar increased-capacity generator was installed at the plant. 10 years later, an older generator was retired, and then the automatic transfer switch project was completed, which enables the entire plant to be powered by the new Caterpillar generator. In 2023, the existing load bank controller failed during a power outage and was replaced with a new controller, and now this summer, the new controller has also failed. Without control, the city runs the risk of degrading the life of the generator. Staff reviewed the proposed project improvements with ATEEM Electrical Engineering and requested a scope of work and fee for the replacement of the proprietary equipment. The final negotiated scope of work includes hardware to replace the existing PLC, programming the new PLC, replacing the control equipment within the load bank, and integration into the plant's existing SCADA system. And I will say, integration into the SCADA system is a very cool upgrade, it will allow staff to control this equipment at the same computers as all other components of the plant. So given the number of power outages that the plant experiences, this is a really necessary So given the number of power outages that the plant experiences, this is a really necessary improvement. Staff is recommending the approval of a contract with A Team and the associated budget appropriation from the Measure H Fund Operating Reserve to complete the project. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
So I might understand that one new controller only lasted a year?
Correct, yeah.
Warranty?
I think it was out of warranty from my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll open this for public comment?
Sue Rodman, member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. And sad to see that it only lasted a year and then went belly up, but you can't do without one to do the work that has to be done by this plant. So we don't have a lot of choices here. So, yeah, we're gonna have to do this. We don't like it, but we have to do it.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion questions?
So this thing apparently failed after like 13 months, or whatever it was. Was there a, was it faulty? Do we know why it failed, I guess is the question?
I don't know why, but I think it has something to do with all of the power outages. I think they just experienced a significant number of power outages and for some reason...
And so whenever there's a power outage, it just screws it up? Okay. So, I mean, when you say power outages, I'm assuming it's when PG&E can't deliver power? I mean, it's not like we're some...
Correct, yeah. They, I've been sitting there in their office and had the power shut off twice. I don't spend that much time at the plant. They get shut off disproportionately to the rest of Placerville.
So with the new system that's going in, is there going to be something that's going to help protect that particular component?
I don't know for sure, but I hope so.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I mean, I would just say, we should get some more information though about somebody not coming back in another year because something happened, or some sort of hardening of that system, so that we don't get like, I don't know how you would call that, but surged, you know?
Surge protector?
Surge protection, you know, gigantic surge protector. It's agreed.
Who knows what the problem is, but...
I just would hate to...
It would be good.
Yeah.
We will follow up on that, but I'm pretty sure, at least my understanding is, that this will be a more secure system and it will not, it will prevent that from happening in the future, and it will also prevent further damage to the generator out there.
Okay.
We'll follow up and make sure.
Yeah, just next time, if you give us like a, just an update at whatever, just...
Yep.
Then without, then I'll make an approval, or I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 12.5. Consideration of a professional services agreement for legal services with Cole Huber LLP to represent the city and seeking a court-appointed receiver for the property identified as 3113 Clark Street, assessors parcel number 003-241-016, and a $35,000 budget appropriation from the general liability fund unassigned fund balance. Mr. Rebus?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Start with a little background. This subject property has been in code enforcement since April of 2020. Issues involved: lack of defensible space constituting a fire hazard, accumulation of trash, refuse, and garbage constituting a public health hazard, fire damage to the structure, loss of electrical service, deterioration of the structure, including decking, constituting a public health hazard, and abandonment of the property creating an attractive nuisance. Property's been subject to numerous break-ins, numerous police interventions, dealing with trespassing within the structure. Property has been rent-tagged and deemed uninhabitable by the city building official. On August 8th of 2023, the City Council held a closed session to discuss the status of the subject property. Following council consideration of the circumstances in regards to this property, the council did direct staff to seek a court-approved receiver, to be given custodial responsibility of the property, and to remedy the site conditions, and to dispose of the property. The receivership is a mechanism used for abandoned and substandard properties where the owner has a history of noncompliance with city codes and abatement orders. The receiver will serve as an agent of the court, being appointed by a judge, to oversee the abatement of nuisance issues with the property and to secure and manage the property for eventual sale. The receiver acts under the authority and supervision of the appointing court, can borrow against the property, and can use those funds to pay for emergency owner or occupant relocation, in this case, there is none, property rehabilitation, demolition, or work as authorized by the court in order to bring the property into compliance with local and state land use regulations and building codes. So to talk a little bit about Mr. Sam Emerson of Cole Huber, you're probably familiar with him. He was, he acted as the city's agent when we sought receivership for the property of Victor Lane in Cedar Ravine. Of course, that was a very lengthy one, and maybe the city attorney can help me, it was a very levicious litigator, I don't know if that's the correct term, but it's where the owner was continually filing lawsuits against the city every turn of the way. So it really, you know, drove up the costs and everything for that particular case. So that was atypical, so I don't want the council to be scared off. I don't see the circumstances with this particular property. So I want to talk at this point a little bit more about the cost. So the estimated cost for legal services to be provided is estimated to be between $30,000 and $35,000. Half of this amount, or $15,000 to $17,000, is expected to be incurred in the first three months following execution of the agreement, and looking at one to two court hearings in order to have the court then appoint a receiver. Monthly expenses are expected to be approximately $1,000 per month following. No fees are to be paid to the court-appointed receiver. So the receiver is at risk financially. If the subject property has equity, which we believe this property does, the receiver can secure loans to rehabilitate the property. Typically, proceeds from the eventual sale of the property would cover the expenses of the receiver and cover all city costs, including our cost to pay back Mr. Emerson with Cole Huber. Zillow estimates the current value of the property about $348,000, or a range from $296,000 to $397,000. I also looked at Redfin, which estimates the home's value at $395,000, or from $375,000 to $446,000. The property last sold, and this is just kind of for fun, on September 12th of 1978 for $19,500. The property is free and clear of debt. So with that, staff is recommending that the council approve the professional services agreement for legal services with Cole Huber LLP, and authorize the city manager to execute the same, and to then approve a budget appropriation, the amount of $35,000, from the general liability fund unassigned fund balance. Thank you, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Okay, so my understanding is whoever is appointed the receiver will be doing the rehab, or is that something that the city is going to be responsible for? Or if they plan on doing any rehab?
Yeah, once the court approves of the receiver, appoints a receiver, that receiver is working under the, under the court direction. And so it's the receiver that would secure loans, rehab the property, make the decision where it works and it needs to be done in order to make the house more presentable and saleable.
Gotcha. Okay, cool, thank you.
Vice Mayor? I have no questions. Okay, we'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for further discussion and a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Hold a second.
May I have roll call, roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we will be back to 12.2 now. Consideration of a resolution declaring the abandoned pole sign located at 564 Main Street as an abandoned on-premises sign and a public nuisance, and declare to commence abatement. Mr. Rebus?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I also want to thank the council for amending the agenda and putting this at the end of the discussion items. Staff did receive a phone call from the applicants, the owners, and they said they were running late, that they were on their way, and they were expected to be here at 5:15. So, and it's, so I don't know what's keeping them now, because both the husband and wife are traveling at different times, and I was assuming at least one of them would be here. So, but I'll go ahead and continue. So, the subject parcel is developed with now a vacant restaurant building formerly known as the Rocker Oyster Fellers Kitchen and Saloon, which closed as of August 5th of 2024. The pole sign in question is located atop the restaurant building, as shown in the picture in your staff report. Based on city records, no permit clearly identifies the final construction of the subject pole sign. However, staff estimates that the sign has been in place since the 1960s. Staff believes that the pole was actually in place prior to a large addition to the building, so the pole was actually freestanding from the ground up, and then the build, eventually the addition was built around the sign, which gives it that on-the-roof appearance. The subject parcel has actively been in code enforcement since 2020 for unpermitted signage, outdoor dining, the loss of required onsite parking. Staff has been in communication with the property owners and business owners since 2020. A site plan review application for the parcel and a variance application was submitted to the department in September of 2023. Unfortunately, sign and sign modifications following the submittal rendered the application incomplete, and an additional information request was sent to the owners in November of 2023. Staff responded to the applicant's question on December 15th of 2023, after which no communication was received until the next notice of violation was sent in May of 2024. Staff met with the business owners on May 29th of 2024, where the applicants were informed of outstanding information required for a complete application, as well as a reminder to include the pole sign in the revised information, as the copy on the sign, Mexican food, has been removed over 180 days. Staff indicated that if the information, including the proposed use of the pole sign, was submitted by the timeline, that staff would not proceed with the enforcement of the pole sign as abandoned, because we can include it as part of a master sign plan with a site plan review. Two extensions were granted to the applicant for submittal for additional information, first on June 28th to July 12th, and then again from July 12th to July 19th. Unfortunately, the information was not submitted until the following week, on July the 22nd, 2024, past the deadline. It is therefore the opinion of staff that the signed structure is therefore abandoned pursuant to zoning ordinance. An abandoned business is one that has not operated on a regular or active basis for a period of 180 days or more during the business advertised, has not carried on those activities which are necessary in incidental to the operation of a business, or like type or character. Further, this pole sign does not meet the city's current pole sign design standards, and would not have been permitted in its current configuration, and since it constitutes a roof sign, which are not permitted within the city. This is a legitimate means for the city to abate non-conforming signs. Staff has received an email from the restaurant owner, which, that email has been provided to each of the council members, who is the tenant, and also the property owner of the property is in some transition of option-to-buy or something of that nature, requesting to meet again with staff. A copy of this email is provided. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt the proposed resolution to declare the abandoned on-premises sign on the subject property to be a public nuisance, and declare to abate as such. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will open 12.2 to public comment?
Mayor, I noticed that the applicant has just arrived.
Okay.
He's also arrived. Well, someone did arrive, someone else arrived.
The applicant has arrived.
Just on time, it shows, it looks like.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we had some traffic coming up. So, yes, we do own 564 Main Street, the building, and in reference to the pole sign, we are currently looking for a lessee to come and lease the property and take over the business, so we're looking for the right person and the right mix that we know will succeed there. And that pole sign is a vital part of the signage for that location. We do ask that we get a little bit of an extension on that to find the right person to put in the master sign plan, excuse me, and, and hopefully it's, you know, market this part of Main Street and get it, get it up and running again.
I have a question for you. It seems like we've been doing this for four years. Can I ask why in the last four years we haven't gotten this into compliance or resolved this?
It was in compliance up until the turn, when we turned it into Rocker Oyster Fellers, and that's when we took off the, the Cantina signage from the Mexican concept.
Okay, so for the last nine months?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And we had, we had an intention to improve the sign and have it all redone, but we just ran out of funding towards the end, and downtown Placerville has been, Main Street has been extremely low in attendance, as you probably all know from tax records. So, you know, anything we can do to help market Main Street and get, get it revived and up and running again, you know, would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else in the public want to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for discussion, motion?
So you were saying that sign goes all the way through the building? Okay. Pierre, I got kind of directed at you, so if we go to remove this, how is that done?
They would probably hire a contractor who had actually saw or welded off that portion of the, of the pole that extends beyond the roof, and then cap it.
Okay, so it would be, all right, cut off the top and cap then. Okay. Thank you.
What is the council's will? I mean, I'm struggling with how long and how many outreaches we've done to try to deal with this. Public comments are closed unless someone has a question for you. Thank you. Okay. If you have more information, go ahead and come up to the podium.
There was, there was just a lot of, a lot of confusion in how to go about the requesting all of the updates for this, for this location versus the outdoor area that was built during COVID, the outdoor patio area, and the, along with the signage, the city wanted it all done at the same time. So we were going through different processes and back and forth a lot with the, with the city, but we did have a couple lulls, as did they in the meantime. We're running two restaurants, so, you know, getting, getting to it completely was, in quick time was a little bit of a difficulty for us, but, but we were always in communication with, with Pierre's team in this, so trying to get it all resolved and get everything buttoned up correctly.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. So it was the oyster thing for about nine months, and prior to that, it was what, Hangtown Cantina, or something like that?
Right.
Were you involved in that restaurant too?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been an active participant since 2020?
Since 2016.
Well, 2016, okay.
Been there for eight years.
Okay.
Yeah, we rebranded in 2019. Yeah, we rebranded in 2019, just in time for COVID to head up.
Right, right, right. Okay. So you've, all right, so at least your activities have been constant on this particular issue throughout, and you ran a business in there throughout?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Can I opine, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I've had permission to opine, so I'm going to. This is one of these situations where at least this particular person seems to have been more engaged in this than the one we down there buy the Kentucky Fried Chicken. You know, it's a challenge for us because we do have these rules. We ask our staff to go out and spend time doing them and enforcing them, and then it seems like we always have this last minute, you know, someone's asking us to, you know, for a reprieve from something. And I must say honestly, I find it annoying. I know that, you know, running businesses is not easy, running brick-and-mortar restaurants is not easy. Any business on Main Street right now is not particularly easy. However, we have expectations that the folks that run the businesses and own the buildings will comply with our requests. Having said all that, at least you showed up, which was better than the last time we had to talk about this. You know, and if we enforce this, then we get, you know, someone's, I mean, not that I care what happens on social media, because it's the same 10 people talking to each other eternally. But, you know, if we enforce this rule, which we probably should, we have rules, we should enforce them, we should be consistent, and we started to be consistent two weeks ago, we get painted as hating businesses in Placerville. Okay. I'm not sure what to do here. If we gave you 30 days, would that make a difference? I mean, and be honest about this, I, you know, we've had people come to this podium and talk to us ad nauseam about stuff.
Sure. I mean, we're actively looking, we have three interested parties in the building now, we just want to make sure we're getting the right one in, because otherwise we have these turnovers. So yes, 30 days would help.
Well, we've been talking. We've been talking about this for four years, so I don't know. Does anybody else wish to opine?
Yeah, I mean, we've, I think this is number four now, I think, we've had on these. Looks like we've done two where we've given some sort of reprieve. One came into compliance, one is inactive escrow, the third one got denied, and now we're here on this one. So there hasn't been exactly consistency on the ruling. And I think that goes to the uniqueness of each one, though, right? I mean, it's always hard. I mean, you do have rules, but there's also the unique issues with each of these.
I agree.
I'm not looking, I mean, you're right, it's four years. I mean, no matter how you cut it, it's four years of things. I look at it, I'm looking at these, and I looked at the last one, as more of not even so much for the individual owner, as I just look at it sort of this way, from a bigger scheme of restaurants are really struggling in Placerville. Minimum wage has hit them extraordinarily hard because you can drive to Sacramento or Folsom and be a server or a cook, and some of those restaurants can absorb those costs. So we've seen more restaurants close in Placerville than you have in other areas, and I don't expect that to get any better anytime soon. You can just look at the listings and know that a lot of other restaurants are also in, for sale in Placerville. So it is not an easy time for people to go into that. I also don't think it's going to be an easy sale for anything that is a restaurant, because if you look at the numbers, you probably aren't going to show a lot of profits for people that want to come in and buy that restaurant behind you. So I would rather have a building that has the best potential to be sold, because I'd rather have a building that's occupied than be right about an ordinance on a sign. And so I don't mind giving a little bit extra time. I don't remember what we gave on that first one.
Spankies.
Yeah, we did too. We gave extra time for Spankies, that shopping center, and then we gave extra time for what is now called Broadway Crossing, up where the UPS building is on Upper Main. But I'm willing to entertain a timing. I don't think it should just be open-ended, because I do think there needs to be teeth to it. But at the same time, if that sign is for some reason, a reason for somebody to think that they can come in and try and be an entrepreneur and make that a go, then that's a better thing for us in the end. So I'm willing to discuss what a timeframe could be from my perspective. I would say probably at least 90 days. I mean, escrow, if you look at anything in Placerville, houses aren't moving very fast, businesses aren't moving very fast. It is a slow market to sell something. So I don't think, I don't have great expectations that in 30 or even 60 days that this property is going to sell. But I do think we need to have, you know, constraints around how much time, because this has been going on for a while.
Just, I don't think they're looking to sell the property, they're looking at just getting the business in there.
A new tenant?
Is that correct? So I just wanted to make sure that.
Okay, understood.
So Pierre, just out of curiosity, what would bring the sign into compliance?
Well, currently, the sign is considered under our code to be an abandoned sign, so it should be removed. But as Councilmember Saragosa said, you have provided a time period for a building either to be sold and for a new tenant or new owner to come in and then utilize the sign.
Okay, so the sign is out of compliance just because of the ordinance that was set?
It's considered an abandoned sign.
Okay.
I thought you said that the roof sign wasn't.
That sign's been there since 1960-something, right?
It's a pole sign, but it's also a roof sign. I guess what I said in my staff report is such a sign would never be approved under our current codes. And this is a mechanism for the city to bring non-compliant signs either into compliance or have them removed.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Yeah, I'm, you know, struggling with this as well. But I think, you know, looking at the previous items as well as this one, you know, the owner of the building did come in with a plan and is asking for some time. And that was one of my major issues with the last one that came before us, is there was no proposed plan to try to get the signage in use in any timeframe at all. So I would like to give them some additional time, similarly as we did with the building that was selling and the sort of shopping center, to see if they can get a new tenant and come into compliance. But I certainly want a limitation on that. I believe for the building that was selling, we did give them 180 days to sell and get a new owner and tenant in and get new signage up. So that may be, it's not the exact same situation, but it's somewhat similar and a basis for creating a timeframe.
I'm kind of more in line with Michael with the 90 days. He's not selling the property, he's just getting a leasing. He said he's got three people who are interested in and should be moving forward. And so I think we do need to look at these different circumstances of each one, and I would be amenable to the 90 days. Vice Mayor?
Well, the other thing too is we really need to think about what we're doing in the future, because I don't want staff chasing their rear ends all over Placerville. And they come in here and they've done their jobs, and then we kind of like, because we're feeling sorry or soft-hearted or, I don't know about, I don't think it's compassionate, because I don't think the business across the street went out of business because of the sign. I don't think restaurants on Main Street are going out of business because of their signage. I don't believe that for a minute. And I think if that sign was gone and you had a good product and a restaurant people wanted to go to, they would go there. If it don't, then you could have all the signs you want sticking up out of that building over there. It ain't going to happen. So I think, I am, the only thing that impresses me is that the gentleman actually showed up. And I'd be willing to do 90, but we also need to think about our direction to staff on this subject, because they have plenty of other things to do.
I agree. I mean, and the reality is, we've had this conversation four times. I mean, I would assume there'd be some expectation that there's going to be some feedback from us on these, knowing the situation.
The expectation is, is that we cave when the people show up and we let them have their signs longer.
Yeah, but I think they've.
That's what ends up happening.
But the end results have been better, though, I mean, as opposed to just carrying a sign down. So at least in my opinion.
Okay.
But that, but I guess you could say it's forced people to the table to actually do things that should have been done correctly.
Yeah, after four years, they get, yeah.
But I don't disagree with that. I mean, it's annoying. And I don't want to put staff through motions that they don't have to. But I do think, you know, we have gotten better, it's become a better thing, and it forced people, even though they didn't, you know, they maybe not deserved it, but it ended up being a better outcome.
Our attorney has her light on.
Thank you. One option for the council is to continue this item to December 10th. That would be 91 days after today, which would then allow you to reconsider this, but give the 90-day timeframe for the applicant.
I appreciate that. But I really want this 90 days are done. I don't want to keep bringing it back and back. You know, we need to make a decision. Like I said, this isn't a first time. Staff has reached out multiple times over the last four years. They've, you know, not responded many times. You know, I'm willing to give one more chance, but, you know, we need to not spend all our staff time on these sorts of things, because people don't want to respond.
Yeah, I agree.
So just a clarification on that. And if the council wishes to go that route, you can make a modification to the resolution such that the pole sign is not considered abandoned. If abated before, honor before December 9th, and otherwise it would be considered abandoned, then staff is going to complete the abatement process, so that.
Without it coming back.
Exactly, exactly. But we still have some procedures under the municipal code that we have to follow.
That makes sense. I like that.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes. So I will make a motion that we grant an additional 90 days, that we deem that this pole sign not to be abandoned, and that, but within 90 days, it needs to come into conformance with the code. Otherwise, it will be abated through staff. Did I say that right, or was that wrong?
Is that actually accurate? Because this sign can never come back into code because it's out of code, with the reason that, I mean, if this was a brand-new building over there, that sign would not exist, because we don't allow that in the city. So it's not going to, I mean, it seems like a little inside baseball league, but that's what we do. So.
Well, the code defines an abandoned sign as one that hasn't been used for 180 days. So if it's brought back into conformance, you can find that you're not declaring it to be abandoned until after that timeframe.
It's like a non-conforming, but a.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So is his motion the same as what you said?
I want to make sure I'm right.
Attorney Abrahimi.
So I would modify Section 3 of the resolution. And amend it to say that the city council hereby declares the pole sign located at 564 Main Street, as described in the staff report, to be an illegal abandoned sign and a public nuisance, if not abated, honor before December 9th, 2024.
Okay. Vice Mayor had one more question?
I have one more question. This is actually for staff. If that's, if we heard a loud noise and that sign fell over now, would you be, well, not that one, because this one's, something's happening with the building. But say for that, we weren't having this discussion about that building, and that sign fell over, would you be able to replace that sign?
I think it depends. If that sign was approved under a master sign plan, then yes, they could replace the sign in accordance with the approved master sign plan. But say there is none, and it was a non-compliance that falls over, if it's greater than 50% value damaged, then under our non-conforming use section of the code, it could not be replaced.
It could not be replaced. Okay, thank you.
I will amend my motion to what our city attorney just read into the record.
I'll second that amended attorney motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? No? Okay, can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to item 13. Council reports from other agencies and meetings. El Dorado Transit Authority received and filed the final amended operating budget for 2324, formed an ad hoc financial audit review committee, which you are on, Councilmember Yarborough.
Congratulations.
Just so you know. And adopted a CIP for the Placerville station improvements. So they agreed to share half that cost with us.
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to Transportation Commission. All right, we approved an audit for the Transportation Commission in Transit. We approved the El Dorado County Regional Transportation Plan 2025 to 2045 with the financial forecast scenario two. LAFCO, we did not meet. Seco.
We will be meeting here in these actual, here in Town Hall. It did change. We were going to originally be at the sheriff's office, but we're going to be here. I will send an email out this week to the rest of you if you want to join us. I know we've been talking with Cleve about it already. It'll be next Thursday. We're starting here at 8:00, and we're going to do a tour, so it'll go through the stoplights, talk about Triptide Green, and then up to Apple Hill. We'll go to Larson's Farm, get some apple donuts, talk about some of agriculture, our agriculture in this region. And then we'll come back, we'll do the Camino Safety Corridor, come back around, go down Broadway, talk about some of the work that's been going on Broadway, as well as, I'm going to have Cleve talk about the broadband news that we got for the city of Placerville, as well as some of the construction that we're doing through there. And then come back here for the board director's meeting, which will start at 9:30.
Okay, so that's September 19th?
That is September, Thursday, September 19th, yes. And I will get, I apologize, it's been a little bit of a fluid thing, but I will get emails out to everybody, so you have a little bit more information as well.
Did you say, you're going to Rainbow Orchard?
We're going to go to Larson.
Larson, okay.
Because.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah. Yeah. So we changed it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. Boss will leave promptly at 8:10 a.m.
Sure. Can I add one thing to the Transportation Commission?
Please.
I'd like to add one thing. We did get our semi-periodic update on all the projects that are currently being done in El Dorado County and Placerville, and then some transit stuff. And it's a really great document. The Transportation Commission puts it out, I think, every six months, and it has everything in it. If you want to know what's going on transportation-wise in this, on the West Slope, you should check it out. It's very informative, and they always do a good job putting it together.
Yep. Okay, Pioneer Community Energy.
We did not meet in August, and we meet next week.
Okay. Fire Safe Council, I did not attend, because I was at the employee party. Sue Radman is in the audience. Is there anything exciting, important that the public should know that happened at the Fire Safe Council?
Sue Radman for the Fire Safe Council. Mostly just for people to be aware of the commitment that you need to make in terms of hours and dollars in order to keep the community.
Firewise.
Yeah. So we keep our communities, firewise communities, going, and that those, they're going to hopefully get out an easy to fill-out form that people can submit, so that they can say, okay, I did my $500 this year, and here is when it was, and here's what it was. I did some home hardening in terms of right around my place of taking out shrubs and making my home hardening and my defensible space better. And those things help you with your. And those things help you with your home insurance. Not all insurance carriers give you a discount, and the amount of discount can be wildly different, but they do usually give you something.
Sue, I have a question on that, because I did, like, gutter guards on my gutters. So do I email that to Placerville Fire Safe Council?
Yes.
Like, at the receipt and then send it in to you all?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can fill out the form and say, I did this, and this was the cost, and this was the number of hours it took, and.
And the date.
And the date, okay. Because that, I mean, that would be, it'd cost you a bit, so, you know, hopefully that would help a little bit.
And then you get, you get your certificate that says I'm part of this firewise community that you can submit to your insurance company.
Okay. That I did do, and it's true, you get a little bit of a, a little bit of a break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Plus, why, when you do these things, if you do have a fire, you're more likely to keep your house.
True.
Well, that's been my, my goal in doing the things that I've done, is that I may only get a 0.5% discount, but if it means if the fire comes through and my house doesn't go up in flames, that's a win for me.
Thank you.
It's worth more than the insurance discount.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that. Opportunity Knox?
I was out of town and unable to attend the last meeting.
Okay. All right. This brings us to Item 14, Requests for Future Agenda Items. I have a future agenda item I want the council to consider. The public has brought this up a couple times, it's been kicked around, but I guess way back when, we used to do two-year mayor terms, and I understand quite a few other communities do them, and I just want to bring that back for this council's discussion. So that requires three out of the five council to approve that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. That'll be a future agenda item. Do you need any more direction, city manager? No? Okay, great. All right. Item 15, City Manager and Staff Reports. Do we have any?
I don't believe we have any tonight.
Okay. Upcoming items, I will let you read for yourself. Is that Richard Montgomery in the audience? Okay, I, yeah, I want to give you the proclamation we did read earlier, and we told all those men to get checked and do their due diligence.
And, Mayor, I would just like to state that it's my fault that I told him the meeting was at 6:00. I made a mistake, and I, I'm owning that now. I apologize, Mr. Montgomery. He did arrive what he thought was in time, so, thank you.
Just checking things out. Just checking things out. Almost of the age where they stop checking because they figure you'll die of something.
I didn't, they told my grandfather, they're like, it doesn't matter.
You get, you get to a certain age, and you go, yeah, someone else will kill you.
Yeah. They're like, it's beginning, but, you know.
You're 800 years old.
Yeah.
You should be so lucky.
And, Mayor, members of council, Regina, we've been doing this for a lot of years, and I'd like to see it continue on a personal note, now that I'm a senior, and I've decided I'm retiring at the end of the year, but I'm not too sure who's going to pick up this piece of the puzzle. I've kind of chaired the group in Cameron Park from prostate cancer for 20-odd years, so I'm trying to retire out of that, but I haven't found anybody that wants to step up yet. Anyhow, thank you so much. This has been a long, interesting battle since I was diagnosed some 25 years ago, and things have changed dramatically. Currently, although we still have the PSA blood test, which is the indicator, there's some new tests now available that hopefully will allow a man to bypass a biopsy, which is, I'd say, one of the most disturbing parts of the diagnosis. So that's a good thing. There's also a new thing out, you've heard of probably PET scans, but there's one for prostate cancer called PMSA, and it depends on your basic numbers, you get a little injection, your body lights up, hopefully not, but the idea is it will light up and show you where some of the cancer is that's outside the prostate, and hopefully they can then maybe use CyberKnife, radiology, and different things to treat it without a whole radiation of the pelvic bed, which creates sometimes problems for bladder and anus and other things. So anyhow, it's looking better. COVID changed everything, like I mentioned in the past. People are not going to the doctor like they used to. Guys in particular are not going to see their physician, and most of the people that are coming to the group in the last year or so are already metastatic, so it's spread. So treatments are out there, but they're a little more drastic, what have you. So been trying to get the word out. There's a lot of medical institutions these days that don't want to do a PSA if you're past 70. Well, people are living 90s to 100, and myself, I'm 88, so it's the type of thing, if you get diagnosed at 70, if you're metastatic, you might get five or 10, or you might get five years, but if they get caught early, who knows? Like, I got mine early, and I'm here 25 years later. But I don't consider myself cured. I like to think I'm in remission, because I've had guys 30 years after, quote, treatment, have a recurrence. So it can happen. It's rare, stuff happens. Anyhow, I want to thank you very much for being around for the prostate guys and putting out the proclamations, and I know people get tired of hearing about it, but it's the way it works. Anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Really important stuff, we appreciate you sharing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 6:18.